Wow, there's a lot of people here. Hi, hello everybody! Uh, I will be starting in a few seconds, please wait, thank you so much. Hello Fleshy, welcome, welcome! Hello! Hello everyone! Oh my god, I'm actually nervous. It's just a study stream, what is it to be nervous for? Doh. Hi everybody! Hello! Hi! My name is On the Delta and today we're... Not playing, but rather studying. We're studying, uh, languages today. And... Uh, before that, I will put a disclaimer that everybody's study... Styles are different. Whether you don't get a specific studying method, then that's fine. That doesn't mean that you're dumb. That doesn't mean that you're stupid. Some things work differently for others. And I hope that, um... E- Either way, if you don't get it, it's fine. You can always ask any questions if you're confused. Um, to be, um, open. The reason why I'm adding Japanese as my study... Uh... Here in my languages, it's not for the sake of studying, but rather, I... I'm here to teach people as well! I'm actually a GLPT N2 passer. It's not something to brag about, it's... It's still high-ranking, but it's still something. I'm not really good at... Live streaming, um... Conversations in Japanese, that's why, um, I did do a test karaoke with JP only. But, yeah! Also, hi CTS, welcome! Hello! Uh, it's okay if you just drop by and go to sleep, I appreciate everybody's time here. Thank you, thank you, thank you! So yes, um, as you can see, it's currently set to Japanese right now. Um, we will be setting it to Indonesian in a few seconds. And also, I turned off the knock. Nobody's gonna knock on my door while I'm studying, okay? We're having that lo-fi beats while we study as well. We just wanna study, no knocking on the door! The dorm's closed! Thank you, thank you everybody! Also, as you noticed too, sorry, I'm just like basically yapping, I'm just like my mom. Um, if you noticed, you guys have an icon for the channel points too. I worked on it yesterday. Um, we finally have an icon of our iconic curry rice, and I color-coded everything to a specific reward. Bits also have a icon, it's basically rice, fried rice and spaghetti. For now, it's foods! Oh, uh, they- These are just placeholders, but that's my favorite foods. For the meantime, for the bits and channel points, they're changed. And, we also have a pen light! Woopie! We got a pen light! Because I feel like, uh, I haven't really done my best for the emotes, for the meantime. Sorry! I'm- I've been busy, uh, totally not watching Casper's streams. Sorry, I just wanna watch my mom and dad. That's why, I've been busy! In Raptor! In Raptor, yes, that's me! The pull is too much! And also, I'm also doing jobs as well, but I'm also looking for a job, but, I mean, other than freelancing of course. Anyways... Back to the actual thing, let me switch it to the, um, Indonesian, shall we? Let's start with Indonesian, um... My bad! There we go. And as you can see, I've actually have a 22-day streak, I've been working on, I've been working my ass off. I do understand that, um... Duolingo is not really just... You know, it's not really good for learning things from scratch, because like it doesn't really teach you grammar or grammatical rules. It teaches you phrases rather. And, for me, I don't really mind... Because I think I learn better if it's like with people around. When- When it's studying, it's hard to really understand what they mean. It just doesn't, uh... Stick too hard if I just do the books and stuff. But, uh... Yeah, and I actually, to be honest, I don't really know if there's... An Indonesian learning book? So yeah! Yeah, I never give it very far streaks, I'm very forgetful. For language learning, always good to have multiple ways. Exactly! Um, for example, um... The reason why duolingo is good... When you already know Japanese, is it's there to keep your senses... Sharp. Like, you already know what to do, but are you still like, are you still able to actually... You know, um... Understand specific... Let's just say, grammar rules. That's the thing with Japanese, see? It's very... Contextual heavy and also, the grammar is different. Same with Indonesian, um... This is my backboard, by the way. Yay! I'll- I will write things down as we go. Uh, thi- This is basically for, um... For the things that I've learned in Indonesian rather than Japanese, since I already know Japanese. Uh, if there's anything that I haven't learned yet, I'll definitely learn. Uh, I mean, write it down in here. If we switch- If we switch to Japanese later, but... Konnichiwa, Kino Rashi-san, konnichiwa! Yokosou watashi no hai-shi-e. Ah, watashi wa ne, ano... Ei-go dakke hanatsu-mori nan desu ga, ano... Ma... Kore wa JP to Endone-sia-go no, ah... Benkyo hai-shi-nan-ode. Soshi ge- Ah, ima- ima ne, ano, ei-go dakke hanashimasu dakero, sore ga dejobu nan desu ka ne? Gomen ne. Ah, but yeah! Sorry about that! See? Ah, I can't talk! I can't talk! Pera-para-yan, otte shite. Yeah, that's... Okay, so Kino is not a Japanese native, okay? Noted! Sorry, I- I- It's just like, um, just to be sure, you know? Konnichiwa, okay. Uh, let's see, let's- Let's finally get into the actual duolingo! My bad! Okay, there we go. Um, this is, I think this is legendary? Oh wait, nevermind, it's- It's for gems. Just about to go to sleep and got jumpscared by the graduation notification? No, I mean, to be fair, I am graduate, I already am a graduate of college, I'm- I'm- I'm already, you know, I already graduated college, but yeah. Uh, let me see. Uh, I never forgot very far for streaks, because, uh, Fleshy or forgetful, it's fine! Um... I don't know, I just like doing these. Halo, kamu dari mana? Halo, kamu... De- Dari mana? There we go! Ah... Siapa? Itu is that, like, who's that? Merah is red, Jakarta is, you know, the place, and Jeruk is orange, Andy isn't it?
Itu.
Siapa itu? Ni hong ke jauzu?
Nama saya Andy, saya dua puluh tahun.
Nama saya Andy. Can you guys hear? Can you guys hear? Uh... Can you guys hear duolingo or no? Shit. Maybe... Okay, good, good, good! Thank you! Uh, I actually separated the desktop audio and duolingo, just in case I get jumpscared by other things, and you guys won't hear anything. Okay, let's... Nama saya Andy, ano... Saya...
Saya.
Uh, wait, hold on.
Nama saya Andy, saya dua puluh tahun.
Saya dua puluh tahun. So this means, my name is Andy, I am twenty years old.
Nama saya Andy, saya dua puluh.
There we go. I- I actually wrote my, uh, my- My introduction in Indonesian. Uh... Is the grammar much different in Indonesian than English? Hmm, it's- It actually follows the SVO rule, but there's also specific differences when it comes to other, um... Words, I guess? I'm still learning from the basics, but from I understood, for the basics is, it's- It's basically subject verb and object. For the meantime. But yeah! The more- The more that I do, uh, get further, I think it would be more... Difficult! Like, I'm learning counting actually, because my name is actually a number. My ni- My name is, uh, tiga puluh empat. Eh, it's- It's a thirty-four. Lambda delta is thirty-four in Greek. There's tiga puluh empat. Halo, nama saya tiga puluh, umur saya dua puluh simbilan tahun. See? This is my- My name! Uh, if I could just like put it here, okay, uh, in- In the blackboard. Kokoban! There we go! Let me add a text here, uh... Let me add some text here, I... I wish I could just like duplicate... This thing, but, uh, it's... For some reason it can't, so I'm just like gonna add another text, I suppose. I just turned on, I'm gonna Delta until next year at least. Nah! It's okay. You- You will be thirty-five soon. That's- Th- This is my... Also, let's say a holiday, uh, because we- We're- We're writing on a blackboard, we gotta- We gotta do our- Our RP, uh, RP. There we go. This is not really words, I mean, this is the words I learned. Here we go. That's my name! Tiga puluh empat. Uh, I totally butchered that shit! Wah! Teacher RP, let's go! Uh, I'll definitely go with that, since, uh, I think people haven't, uh, I don't think I... Talked about this, but I used to be an educator. I used to teach, surprising! Surprisingly! Despite being an English literature, um, student, I was... A professor to teach N5 to N4 Japanese! You'd be like, eh! How did you became like a professor or teaching Japanese? Uh, though, I only lasted a year, teaching was never my forte. I'm more on learning, okay? But even as, uh, if I teach, is- It's very different. And I would say, okay, as- As somebody who learned Japanese as self-taught, I started learning Japanese when I was eleven. So, and I actually did a more of like, my study style is more of a root four slash assimilation style. I lurked in FC2, FC2 is a Japanese blog site, uh, also ami-blo. It's also a Japanese blog site, so I... Basically taught myself to navigate... By force and then understanding what's their function, and what type of things that they're writing in their blogs, and you would say, how would you understand blogs? If there are in a different writing system, in a language system that you're not used to? That's the thing. You figure it... You figure it out, but... It's not only just that, I actually watched, uh, Jikyo Sha... Jikyo Sha Pre... The- These Jikyo Sha players, AKA Let's Players, um, they read game dialogues... One by one, and in a very good pace. So... That's why I was able to learn, actually, I really wanted to give this person thank you, because without them, I don't think I would ever pass my N3 exam. So... But I'm really shy, cuz, um... I followed this person since I was really young, but I don't know how to bring it up without being weird, like, "Hi, did you know that because of you, you helped me pass my GLPT exams?" Yeah, uh, actually, I should link him, actually, cuz he is actually a good, uh, material to study in Japanese, if you're the type of... The- The type of person who would learn more when it comes to listening- Listening and reading through. So I'll link his channel real quick. Uh, matte ne. Uh... Takutaku-san. Takutaku, because, like, it is very important to me. Takutaku. Since they did, you know... They're- They're not... Very perfect as a person, okay? They're- They're... They don't, or they're not don't, but like, they can also read specific kanjis, but... Their listeners actually give a reading, like, "How do you read this kanji?", and then I'm like, "Oh, okay, so that's how you read it." This is this person, um, their name is Takutaku, he's actually recently became a father, few, like, uh, two years ago, which is, I was really happy! It's like finding PewDiePie being a dad again, you know? I'm really happy that one of the person that I look up to became, you know, a family man. But yeah, sorry about that, that's a very huge cha- Tangent! But yeah, so that's my- My learning style, I do know that it's not for everybody. So yeah! If, um... If it's hard, I do understand, please, um, do be patient. Because Japanese is different when it comes to like Indonesian, okay? Indonesian is like something that's alpha, like, it uses alphanumerical... Characters, right? You can read, "Halo, nama saya tiga puluh, umur saya dua puluh simbilan tahun", obviously, because like, it is using ABCDs to portray these words. However, when it comes to Japanese, it's a very different writing system that uses stroke orders instead. So if you feel like, "Oh, well, I feel like I can't write these things", or it's like a different, like, it's just difficult. So, you have to just give it more time. I swear that it will be worth it, and knowing Japanese, you can also like, understand the fundamentals of Chinese and a bit of Korean. It's not like, "Oh, well, I can understand now, all of it." Senai languages are very like interconnected in a way. But I- I think you would have more understanding when you come to read Chinese characters, since they are borrowing some parts of it in their own alfa- Alphabet. Patience and passion is key, exactly! Just to- Just to like, let everybody know that, if you're learning a language, you're also adapting their culture, the way that they speak, and how their, um... Conversations go. And it is a huge undertaking. It- You're not slow if you can't learn it under a year, rather... Children, you know, us children, when we were young, we learn our language first by our parents of course, but we're already adults, learning other languages. So please to be patient with yourself, and also to the language that you're learning, because there's a lot of things that we still have to learn. In high school, learning Latin helped me with Spanish and Italian, exactly, because Latin is like the very branch of the, um, Latin languages itself, which is, um, Spanish for example. Um, my language, Bisaya, I would say language, cuz it is, Tagalog people can't understand what I'm saying if I am speaking in Bisaya. It's an Austra nation language that kind of, um... Derived from Behasa Melayu. Ingani ang istorya sa Bisaya, lahi isha kumpara sa... Tagalog. Kase ganito yung magsalita yung Tagalog eh. Diba ano? Medyo... May diferensya nga diba? Kung ingani mo sulti, murag parehasa... Um, Indonesian kay murag medjugahi. See? The- These two languages in Philippines that I just spoke earlier, they have their different edges to it. Like, Tagalog is more softer? Well, and- And because Tagalog is also like polite, po- It's very nice. But in Bisaya, we're- We're like... I would say it's like Indonesian as well, that's why, there's actually words as mangkubok, mangkubok, I think mangkok? I- I- Because I- I- I forgot like the word, it's like mangkok, is like... The bowl for our language as well, which is like, I- I- I did add it here, in the blackboard. Similar words that are in Indonesian and Bisaya. Is aha ka, apa ini? Like, aha ka? So they're- They're- They're very like similar. Somewhat, somewhat. Like, for example, selamat pagi is like, uh, good morning, right? But for selamat pagi is like, "Thanks, stingray." Oh my gosh! Uh, let's see, "I think I'll share with my friend, I think learning with friends is helpful for me, that's how I learned Russian and trying to learn Japanese that way." Oh my gosh! I'm so sorry if you're ever like... Trying to learn Japanese for me, cuz I... I- I'm quite somewhat unorthodox when it comes to learning. But if there's things that you want to know about, uh, I can answer it in a more, um... Specific way, basically, cuz if we were gonna start from the very beginning, that's gonna be more... Um... It's a long hill from there. Anyways, oh, that's a lot of tangent, sorry about that! I- I didn't even proceed there.
Saya bukan dari Ja- Saya.
Saya bukan dari Jepang, um... Bukan is not...
Dari, bukan.
And not, see? Uh, I am not from Jakarta. That's what I've learned so far, it's- It's really, it does trip me up, especially with nama saya. Because I keep switching it as saya nama because of the grammar rules overriding my brain. But that's why we're learning, right? We- We are trying to learn.
Saya bukan dari Jepang.
Uh, I will say regular Indo and formal Indo is another level to scale, I think that's what I've noticed, because I do talk to a specific, um, axolotls... Or more, you know, tempuras, basically, when they do write Indonesian, is, it's more colloquial or just like more casual. It's also shortened a lot, like, there's a lot of shortcuts in the, I mean, it's similar to, if- If I say, if I were to write in my language, um... Na-a, na-an-naman-pudri. I'm already here, that's what in Bisaya is, that's what I would see, um... That's what I would see Indonesian anyways, because like, they have it shortened, you know, cuz it's texting, you know? It's- It's different. So, the polite ones... Eh, like, especially with Japanese, there's also like keigo, ne? Keigo and other levels of politeness that it's a long... Like, that's a lot to unpack, but keigo is basically, um, polite speech, it's like something like that. Anyways, what did I say?
Saya bukan dari Jepang.
Saya bukan dari Jepang. There we go, see? Uh...
Saya bukan... Dari Jakarta.
I- Yes, internet slang. Yep. "Oh good, I've been on and off and learning for years, but I'm still very beginner, memory issues, but I'm familiar with the alphabet, vocab, and that's about it." "We have the same end yet, but I never learnt any, so I'm like an old man with the online space, uh-oh." Like, for me, I can't really catch up in Tagalog either, because I am Bisaya, okay, like, Bisaya and Tagalog are way different, and the thing with Bisaya and Tagalog is... While we can intersect them, we wouldn't understand each other kinda thing. The way that we type things online is very shortened, same- Same with Tagalog as well, but Tagalog is way more... I guess it's- It's way more out there compared to Bisaya, like, "What the hell are they talking about?", like, "Is this like another form of like, like Malay slash Indonesian or any Southeast Asian language?", which is, it is, it's just like, nobody talks about it that much. Nama saya Andy, saya dua puluh tahun.
Berapa umur Andy?
Berapa umur? Umur is like old, I think. Andy, huh, like, how old is Andy? I think that's what it is in Indonesian? Ah! Yay! See? I- I remember!
Umur Tini sepuluh tahun.
Uh, umur, uh... Tini is... Sepulu... Is ten, right? Dua puluh is like twenty. Ten years old.
Nama saya Tini.
My name is Tini. Uh, berapa umur? Andy? See, like, but there are other things that just confuse me a lot, but, for the meantime, uh, I think it was more of like... Just, the grammatical order is very... Even in Japanese, it's very difficult, but it's only when translating it to English, then it is kind of bit of a difficult thing. Speaking in Japanese is like... As long as... The- The intent is there, I think people would understand, especially if they know, "Ah, naruhodo ne, nihonjin janai nda." It's like something like that, "Oh, you're not Japanese, okay, we get it, that's fine, it's cute that you're trying." I think I did have a talk with, um, Erisan. And, uh, she's a tempura, a vesti who is Japanese, and then she called me cute because like, "I'm trying." Yeah! You know, I am trying. For me, I only do translate texts from Japanese to English, but sometimes I do translate, uh, vice versa as well, but I'm not really used to having, um, extensive dialogues that are like... Eight-hour-long dialogues. I don't have that... Practice partner. But I'm- I'm learning, definitely, yep, yep! Let's see, um...
Dia bukan dari Jepang, dia dari Bali.
Uh, I don't live in Japan, but I live in Bali, okay.
Dia bukan dari Jepang. Dia bukan dari Jepang, dia dari Bali. Dia dari Bali.
Dia is... He, right? He or she, dia is more like the other person, dia is like he, he, they, she. Saya is me. Saya... Like, saya landau or something, you know?
Dia bukan dari Jepang.
Okay, she's not from Japan, she is from Bali, okay.
Apa kabar? Nama saya Tini.
Apa kabar is like, uh, it's like a greeting, if I believe, "How are you?" My name is Tini. I thought Tini was a girl. Yeah, see, I'm learning. Uh, I also uh, ask a lot. Like, I ask Michu a lot. Like, Michu's like, Michu, Michu, what is this? And he's like, oh, well, that's not. Like, ah, nyaruhodo. Dia, you is like you, right? Dia? Kamu? Umur, umur kamu? Um... I, I'm kinda, hmm... Yeah, let's just like hit, give it a shot. Okay, so I'm right. Halo? Uh, apa kabar? I would've done this quicker, but well, there's no timer in the web version, so it's fine. Yeah. It will tell me how long I took doing this, but I think it, I, I took like five minutes long, I think. Ah, you completed unit two! Nyani! We're now at the common phrases for uh, Indonesian. Yippee! But, but yeah, as you can see, like, umm, it, it's way more easier when it comes to like Indonesian, I guess. At least, umm, I do have other study materials besides Duolingo. Alright, when it comes to Ja- Japanese, I can recommend Minna no Nihonko, Genki. But if you feel like, oh, well, I can't read, this book's boring. You can also use Shasinko if you just, you know, just like basic Japanese and you don't really mind, umm, I guess, just like learning the basics. Like, it's just like tourist level, kind of like Japanese, like Shasinko and Wagotabi. Wagotabi is like more of like a RPG with a bit of Japanese, basically. I should link, yeah, Wagotabi, I guess. Cuz uh, Wagotabi is not something very as known as from everybody. But Emmy does stream Wagotabi. So if you guys are interested, you can also check it out. Like her stream, that is, or, or they're, they're, sorry, oh, oh, nor. Yeah, that's Wagotabi. And then, there's also Shasinko in, in Steam. But otherwise, I do suggest Genki, Minna no Nihonko, and umm, if I recall correctly, there was another one, umm... Ay shh... Nandaki... Tobira, Tobira, Genki, Minna no Nihonko. I actually have the key answers to Minna no Nihonko when I use this, when I used to teach Japanese. Yabena. Okay, um, let's see, what else can we do? I mean, we could keep trying uh, a bit more of Indonesian, I guess. But if you guys have any questions once we switch to Japanese, please let me know, and I'll definitely like teach you guys some, some words. I will not be teaching bad words, okay? Waray kata ba? Minna ni osianayo? No, 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 no. You guys can figure it yourselves. Okay, uh, if I can tab it back. My mouse disappeared. It, it happens all the time. I don't know why it does that. Eh, mouse, can you please get me to the start button? Uh, let me, function F5. Why is this doing that? Dang it, my mouse is missing. See, my mouse is missing. Can you guys see? My mouse is gone. What the hell? Oh, oops. Uh, let me... I don't know why it's gone. I got hungry, sorry. No! You took him, you took that away, no! How do I hide this in, in the tab? Cuz like, my mouse isn't showing. Eh, actually, it's been a huge issue. Oh no, what the hell happened? It's been a huge issue lately with my PC. It's just like, oh, well, I'm just gonna go missing. I think it has to do with OBS, because like, it doesn't usually do that. Sorry, the reason why I'm taking, taking so long is I don't know where my mouse is. Hello? Mousekoon, can you please let me, return my mouse, please? Oh no! Okay, uh, I'm that. There we go. There we go. Okay, there we go. Nah. Yeah. 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 Where's my mouse? Uh, uh-oh. Well, okay. Bu- buku?
Buku.
Yeah! I'm having card mode right now. No! Susu. I want susu right now. Susu kokla, eh, chocolate or whatever. How do, how do you pronounce? Because like, I have eaten umm, cocoa crunch, and it's like susu koklat berry, something like that. Chocolate berry? I don't know. Like, very chocolatey taste. Ah, my mouse, where are you? Okay, you're there. Out there, what did you hide? Nor. Letter, surat.
Surat.
Oh, okay, surat. Surat is like, let's see, if, if it just pops in later, mouse, no? Do you want to see how much is Indonesian loner for another language? Yeah, sure. I was just gonna s- like, show you guys that there are, were, there were more. Oh my gosh. Where's my mouse? Like, please return my mouse. I don't know why it does that. Um, did I press something that makes it hide the mouse? Cuz like, it, it did say that it's just like function F5, and it usually like, returns it. Mouse missing. Laptop screen. Ah, what the hell? Just give me a second, guys. Uh, tablet mode. Unplug, restart the computer. Are you fucking serious? Function F, function F6.
Tak tak dis.
Oh my god, there we go. But it's not doing anything. There's still loanwords in Indonesian. Oh, okay, let me check that out real quick. If I can find my mouse! No! Why does this do this to me? I can't even see where the mouse is. I'm so sorry. It's like so scuffed. This is why I was so nervous, because like, I feel like there's definitely something that's gonna happen sooner or later. It usually doesn't do that. Uh, fix my mouse pointer. I guess I really have to like, uh, tab spacebar, and if you have a warm mouse, unplug it. Really, I have to unplug it! Windy, windy. Wow, okay. I have a drawing laptop, so it might be different, but I usually do Windows key and wiggle it around until it reconnects. I wish. Uh, I, I don't know why it does that. Maybe there's something wrong with my mouse. It is a new mouse, by the way. I'm so sorry if it, like, it's so scuffed. Give me a second, please. Uh, BRB. Oh my goodness. It can't be happening. Why is this so scuffed? I don't know why. I should've just put it connected to that. Kiki. There we go. I should've connected to the other fucking mouse, mouse. I hope it works. This is not one. It sucks. Okay. Oh, it's back! It's back! It's back! Hello? Hello! Are we back? Yes, we're back! Oh my gosh! Get outta here. Sorry about that, fellas. It was, I don't know why it does that. But I did connect my mouse to another one. Hmm, it's, hmm, it's okay. Let's see, uh, can we go back to Duo now? There we go. Surat is actually in, in besaya. Sulat is the right, rather than the letter. So let's see now. Uh, if I could just like, get the board up, eh. There we go. And then, we, I should put this here in the in the group here, and then add a text here. Hmm... Holiday, and that. There we go. I mean, sulat is also available in Tagalog. Nagsusulat ng, ng letra, basically. But it's still something. I'm gonna put this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna group it together. There you go. So it disappears quickly. Yay! We're back! I'm so sorry about that. As I, as I did put there, totally nothing would go wrong, huh? Mm-hmm. Scuff central, just like just like my parents. Okay, there we go.
Aku dan kamu.
Aku dan kamu. Aku is like me and you. Aku?
Aku.
Yeah, exactly. You and me. You and I, okay. Is this like by grammatical, it's like you and I, but it's like I and you. Aku is like me and you, but it says I. Okay, well, it does follow that way.
Dia menulis buku.
Menulis? Oh wait, I actually have this umm, I, I've, I've read about this word somewhere.
Menulis.
Right. Menulis. Menulis buku. He writes a buk- Dropping my to say hi before I go to work. Hi, Milky! Hello! I'm so sorry. I, I actually had a huge scuff. My mouse went disappear. Out there ran away from me when I was like, yapping. It's like, meh, I ain't got no time for this.
Kita menulis.
Kita menulis. Also, uh, good luck at work. Take care! Hi, Milky! Kita? Kita?
Kita.
We? Ah, okay, okay. There's another one. Kita, kitang dua. Wait, actually, I, I have to put it here too, umm... Uh, if I could like, get the board up. Let's see, umm... Kubangan san? Oh my gosh! Request a game I should play. Okay, what do you want me to play? I already have projects on board, but I'll definitely play it for you then, okay? I'll put it in my list to do. Uh, I'll write it down. You're really having fun, aren't you? Meow! 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 There you go, lots. Let's see, umm, soa duha uh, uh, dua, dua is two. And then duha two. Uh, empat, empat is like upat for us. Empat, four, four is like upat. See, empat, upat, it's the same thing. But the, but the numbers are the same. As, as you can like I do know that it seems like strange, okay? Cuz like, okay, how does the, how's, what's the correlation between these? But if you say dua, duha, empat, upat, it's the same thing. It's just being used differently. It's really nice, don't you think? There's also, wait, uh, I, I have to also edit this one as well, uh... This is not, not exactly besaya, but it's most, mostly Tagalog and mangkok. Yeah, it's like, it, it is bowl. It's bowl for, for both languages, like mangkok dua in Bicol. Oh, is it the same as well? Igo dua is the same as uh, dua then. So it's like more from how it was written, cuz dua is the same pronunciation as dua in Indonesian, I guess. See, we, uh, we are neighbors, but we have other things that are very related to us. That's really nice. Pulau is also similar to our language. Say napulo is like ten, napulo. Is it napulo? It's like one hundred, or it's like cuz I kinda forgot, because say, I do know ten is pulau as well, pulau. Pulau, the, the way that we write it, it's more of like, umm... Yeah, let's see. Let me just like edit this again. Edit, eh, hello. Uh, for example, like, uh, for Indonesian, indo- Indonesian is like pulu. But in Filipino pulo. That's how we write pulo. Napulo, like that, something. But the way is like a pulu. Eh, that's how you say it in Indonesian. So, i- it's really nice to see like similarities in Southeast Asian countries, you know? Like, we are somewhat related in terms of like language-wise, but it's, the usage is different. It's similar to Japanese, like how Japanese and Korean branched out from the Chinese language, because they are like, the, the language and writing system came from that as the origin. It's similar to Latin, for example. Latin is like umm, most of our often numerics, I guess, came from that, like example, in, in Italian, it also shares a lot of like Spanish words and other things. So yeah, that, that should basically like, whi- which umm, country belongs from a specific group, basically. Like, it lets you know somewhat. But the writing system does help differentiate these things as well, like, if they have other way of writing their own language. The only thing that I'm not really, like, I, I still have a hard time grasping Thai language. Eh, like, not because like, I, I think it's hard. It's more like, the writing system is very how would I say? Like, it's very difficult, and it's not something that I've really touched upon. Same with Tamil, okay? I, I was actually learning Tamil before. But it was really difficult to, you know, adapt to the writing system, and I kinda, for gore to keep my brain sharp about it, and then I forgot what I've learned. That's why you always have to all, um, you always have to learn all the time. Even if you're, ah, well, I already learned about this stuff. I don't need to really like re-sharpen myself. You have to keep doing it, because like, language evolves the more that you go, and whichever that your uses a, um... How would I say? Like, the way you communicate with people, that's where you focus it more. And if you're not using that language to communicate, because it does, like, think about it, if like, you're installing a 200GB worth of game. But you really wanted to play Stardew Valley. So you're basically using 200GB worth of your brain to like, to keep up with stuff, since like, oh, well, I wanna clean it, since I never really use it, so you just like free up your space to have more other things. That's why, when people who are not native language, I mean, not, not native speakers, I mean, of that specific language, then they forget about what they've learned. That's why you have to keep learning and learning it from the, the start to what you've learned before, like, in terms of progress. Yeah, they influence each other. Yes, exactly! Yeah, they influence each other. Yes, exactly! A lot of languages, uh, influen, influence each other. Mostly because like, um... We're kinda related in a way of like, the way we speak. It's just like, we have other ways to communicate. Mm-hmm. Uh... But in terms of Philippines, it's more like a very... It's, it's a mishmash of like, multiple of languages, like, I would say... Even though a lot of my, a lot of Visaya words is like from Bihasa Melayu, it's still the fact that we can't understand each other even if we tried, because it's already branched out too far. But it's still something that, oh, well, yeah, do. It's, it's from that specific country that uses that language. Allham Maritime Trading Row. Exactly! Our, um, our ancestors as Southeast Asians were very seafaring individuals, so loved the sea that much. So they tend to like, you know, go traveling and fishing and then they find each other in another island. Like, ayoh, you like to barter stuff. They're like, ayoh, shoa! And then you start like learning each other languages. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Though, there is a program that is integrating the old system, which is like the Bai Baiin, but honestly... I do appreciate that, but mostly because it is um, a part of our culture that's been long gone. But I wish they also would treasure the languages that's currently in our island, you know? We, we are very colorful in terms of like, um, cultures and stuff. I wish that they would also take care of the ones that's currently there, rather than like discrediting it. I do know that it's, it does more of like a microeighth now, but as somebody who's Visaya, it's, I wish that it gets treasured a lot. I really like, I love my language. It's just like I couldn't find a way to express it in a way that people would say, well... It's still a Filipino language, you should just accept it as, as, as an umbrella kinda thing. But I still want to be individualistic about it, like, I love Visaya. Because like, it helps me, um... Remember where I, where I'm from. Even though it's like, it's not really well-known, even though a lot of the people speak that language. But yeah, it's... It's mostly my grifts, really. I hope that it doesn't come off as ranty, but it's just like expressing my love for it. That's why I'm learning languages here too. Because like, I wanna learn everybody's culture and how they write stuff. And I, the reason why I'm actually learning Indonesian is like, I feel like there's too many friends of mine that speaks Indonesian and I wish to like, connect to them in a way that we could talk to each other too. Hjajime maste, yoroshiku onegaishimasu. Kuchira koso! Hyaki! Kuchira koso! Uh, yoroshiku onegaishimasu. Uh... Imma, ano, Ei Go de Hanashimasu. Dakedo, gomen. Nanka, ikinari subeta. Uh... Imma, bengke chun nan desuka, ano... Ei Go dake otsukemasu nan dakodo, sore wa daijoubu nan desuka ne? Gomen ne. I always speak eh, in English, so, um... Everyone can understand what I'm saying. I, I do have Jimaku. What happened to Jimaku? Jimaku, what, where, where did you go? Did Jimaku die? Yeah, Jimaku dies a lot. I'm so sorry. Eh? Uh... Chotto matte. Uh... Na 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 na. Uh, eh? Where, where did my tab go? There you go. Ah, 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 there we go. Gen, gen go bengke tanoshii desne. Sodeshne. Tanoshii da tomon desu ga, ano... Uh... Madama da na no de, ano... Indonesian go ha jijimetabakari na no de, nanka, ironna monoa shiranai no de. De mo imma ne, naka, Visaya go to Indonesian go tsunagari tai toka, dakara, koko de, ano... Keit, keita no desu. Nanka, naka, ah, onaji koto ba nanda, to you, ne? Atashi ya Indonesian go dai suki. Ah, ga suki. Ah, soru, soru nanda. Atashi mo desu yo ne? Watashi no tomodachi te sa, ano, Indonesian... Minna Indonesian kara ne, naka, Indonesian kara kita no de, naka... Tsunagari tai! Minna to tsunagari tai! Soshi kaewa shai na no! Eto... Koko, koko made ka ne? Uh, Ei Go ni modarimasu ne? I'm gonna switch to English right now. I'm so sorry about that. I'm just like humoring this person right now. Uh... Nan de na? Um, I'm sorry if I'm not like responding to you in, in, eh, in Japanese right now, but, um, I'm currently, uh, studying Indonesian with other people as well. I'll be back to you in, in a bit. Sore, sore de iino desu ka ne? Uh, if that's okay with you? Uh, uh... Kore mo, ano... Eru ru na no de, ano, Ei Go, uh... Ei Go dake ga daijoubu nan desu. Sos, sore ga ne, ano... Minna ga wakari yasuku na no de. Yeah, if, if there, if it's everybody to understand me more properly, then that's fine. Ah! Jimaku, what happened? Ah! Sorry, English is my native language. Oh, that's favor better. I'm sorry, I'm currently studying Indonesian for the meantime. I'll switch to Japanese soon. But it's mostly me learning Indonesian, but I did have a tangent, I guess, when it comes to like languages now. It's more like, um, sharing my feelings about my language that's not really popular in terms of like, in, in Filipino. Because Filipino is not really just an umbrella, there's actually multiple languages of Philippines. Eh, in the Philippines, I mean, like, there's a lot of languages there. Which, I did put, um... I put a text here that does connect Indonesian and Filipino in a way, so I can like, oh, well, see, I do. I do have things that are very similar to your language, kinda thing. Been studying Japanese for almost 5 years or so, so I also know some Malay words, Malay-Indonesian. Oh, that's nice! That's good to know. I'm just gonna chill out on work, Sasia. Thank you so much! Uh, thank you so much! Uh... Cindy, I, I'm not really sure if I could like, refer to you guys as such, but you seem okay with it, so, thank you so much, have fun at work! Thank you, thank you! Me, until I make Chinese and trying to delve into Japanese, Japanese and Sundanese. I think those are like sub-languages of Indonesia, right? There, there's still things that I have yet to learn, really, cause like Indonesian. But I wish to learn more, especially like culturally, what are... Like, hmm, nanti yukane. Like, how would things work in their language, basically? Cause there are other dialects. I'm okay with that. Ah, okay. Okay, nyaruhodo. Thank you, thank you. Kokoban. Bye-bye! Meow! I, I haven't yet to even, I, I haven't even touched Duo, because like, I don't wanna rely on Duolingo when it comes to study, okay? Like, I want it to be more of a tool, rather than being a center of like, learning. Because the best way of, uh, the best way to actually learn is like, do an introspection when it comes to the things that you've learned so far. At least, that's how I study. It doesn't work that way for some people, that's why I was really nervous sharing this kinda stream. But I hope that, you know, uh, it does come across to everybody who's like watching that, oh, well, I'm really serious when it comes to studying. Let's see, um, let's go back to Duo. Kita, we? Right. Cindy is fine, but I send my journal on to me. Si me, right? Si me? I can make some sound recommendations if you want. Oh, that's, that's fine too, please do, just like, uh... Only the title, please. Uh, links are... I, I'm... I'm a bit... Well, how should I say, like, I'm a bit on the fence when it comes to um, links, cause I'm not really sure if they're safe or not, so just the titles will be nice.
Kita menulis surat. Kita menulis surat.
Cindy is fine, I'm sorry, okay. Uh, si me. Si me?
Aku suka kamu.
Aku suka.
Suka.
I like you? I like you. Sukai is like, like, because like, uh, there was like, a part here in the Indonesian, like, um... Sukai, when it comes to, aku suka jeruk or something. Which is funny. It was like more of like, suka, susu, and jeruk. Kitamakan. Kitamakan is to eat. We eat. This is we. Amas yang is in mak... Ker... Makasaris? Oh, soru nana. Okay, okay.
Dia menulis surat.
He writes a letter. I'll, I'll keep that in mind. Thank you, thank you.
Aku menulis buku.
Aku... I... Write a book. It's more like books now. Great work, let's make it a bit harder. You and I. Uh...
Kamu.
Kamu. Dan... Aku. There we go. Dia... Was it the other way?
Menulis.
Surat is a lot.
Surat.
Soru nana. Okay, good, 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 good. Also, the reason why I have Super Duolingo is because I have Discord Nitro. So yeah, I have Discord Nitro and they did give me a 2-month free for Super Duolingo, and that's why I'm like, doing this anyway. The reason why I'm actually doing this is because like, there's also like, uh, the Nitro stuff. Might as well use it, right? Sukai and cinta is like suki and I. I soru nana. Okay, suki and I. Though, I'm not... Cinta, you, you're not something that you should, you should say to somebody really nearly, right? It's like, oh, I, I steru. You're not supposed to say that to somebody that you don't know. Mm-mm. Setai dame. Which is, I'm gonna put my blackboard again? There we go. Uh... Let's see. Hmm... I should put it here too. Like, cinta... Because cinta, cinta is like, you know, it's like the same, cinta. Sinisinta ko, my love, kinda thing. Oh my goodness! But, for us in, um, Visaya, we call our loved ones, or at least people that we do love, as palanga. Higugma is more of like, ai. It's like the same as ai. Like, ai steru, higugmatika. Like, I love you in a more romantic way, but if it's like palanga kita, that means I love you adoringly, like, as a as a way to adore someone. But not in a very like romantic light, in a, like, full, it's not a full romantic light. It's just like, oh, I like you, but I also adore you, kinda thing. That's some rules that you're not supposed to say to somebody that you don't know as well. Like, if you're a friend, like, yo palanga te kau, like, I love you, cause you're my friend. Higugma kita is like a big no-no. You're not supposed to say that to anybody, but the person that you're actually seeing with. But it's good to know that there are actually similar, similar rules, where it comes to like Indonesian and Japanese as well, like ai. Kui. Kui bitone. Like, it's like a lover. Though, in Tagalog, we call our, we call lovers as jowa. In Visaya, we call our lovers uyab. So yeah. Oh. That's a lot of things. Aku is ai. Wait, there's a fun word, kita. Kita is like we. Kita. Like... Though, though... In... Visaya, kita is like, just singular, like, it's not a we. Like, palanga kita. Like, I love you. But it's, it's like I said, it's an adoring one, it's not romantic. But you shouldn't really say that to somebody who you don't really know that much. Friends are fine. Like, you could tell that to your dog, to your friend, but higugma is definitely no-no. Mm-mm, mm-mm. I think similar to cinta then, ne? You're not supposed to say that... Uh, uh... Sayang, sayang is also like, in a way, romantic, right? Sayang? Uh, sayangku, something, I, I forgot, like, I did... There was a meme like, um... Uh, about somebody screaming, it was a meme, like, ah... It was like declaring something, aku sayang, like that. And I forgot that meme. And he was like screaming, and there was like a meme about it, like, um, it's, it's like a tempest meme that they, that adapted to it. I don't know who, who, who made that meme, but I still remember, the guy was screaming. I'm not sure if you remember, you remember that, guys? Like, it was like a very, like, a guy screaming, and then the girl's like, no, I don't, and then she's like, yeah, well, I'm just gonna say it anyways. I just forgot where it came from, because like, I never really bookmarked it. Rather, maybe I did, but my account got, well, you know... It just gone. Oh my gosh, thank you so much for the follow, Katharina Yumei! Thank you so much, and welcome! Uh, I, I, I really appreciate that you guys are dropping by here! Hello, hello, welcome! I do know that, um... As it's, as it stands here, that I'm actually distracted from Duo. Most of the time, I've just been yapping. Like, I, I learn a lesson and then I come back to my blackboard. Because I don't have notes, I only have notebook. Uh, I mean, I mean, I only have my notepad on my PC and this backboard to write stuff. Mm-hmm. I don't have a notebook on me. I might have a notebook on my hand, but that's just like my VTuber. I don't have it in real life. Yep. Which are quite helpful, you can compare and contrast to Japanese if you want. Yes, exactly! It should've been, I should've been really switching to Japanese sooner. But, um, I dunno, it's really fun comparing my language here, and then um... Learning new words. Surat, even, surat. I also like learning numbers, I think that I said that before, earlier, uh, but for the people who just got here, um, before the stream, I ta, I was studying how to learn counting in Indonesian. Which I did realize that a lot of Indonesian words when it comes to like, counting is the same. It's really nice. Mm-hmm. Also, I do have other things that I've learned before, like, um, which? Is this? Is this the one? Oh, nope. I'm like trying, there we go. Uh, from what I've learned here, uh... This was the words that I learned before. I'm not gonna write the bad words that I've learned, obviously, because like, that's that, that's not the point of this stream anyways. So, um, I've learned met, bobo. Mo, 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 bobo, right? Uh, I, I, I'm bad at pronouncing these, but, um, I was taught that this is how to say goodnight. At least in a non-polite way, I guess. I do, I also know. Salamat pagi. And you can just say pagi, from what I've observed, you can just like say, pagi. Something like, good morning. If we're greeting a good morning, or just like morning, like that. What else did I have learned beforehand? Like, before I studied Indonesian, I did learn a lot of stuff. Most of it are memes. Like, before I studied Indonesian, I did learn a lot of stuff. Most of it are memes, and then, um, a lot of them also came from my guildmates. In Ragnarok Online, my guildmates were a mix of Indonesian, Malaysian, and Singaporeans. So, I did learn a couple of two. Gimana is like how, right? How? How or what? Aba apa is like what, right? Apa? Apa? Ini. Ini is like apa ini. I, I forgot what it meant, but I, I do know these words. But yeah, that's what I've learned prior. I saw a Japanese language article of which language it was easiest for Japanese people to learn. Indonesian was near the tip. Hmm, because I think it's, it's very straightforward once you get to, like, get the hang of it. But once you actually start to talk to native Indonesians, I think this has already been touched by one of the natives here, um, by, uh, Sime. Sime, that, um, the polite Indonesian and the more colloquial Indonesian is different. Like, the way that they speak online, for example, it's just like a huge difference, which sometimes do confuse me. Like, what, what do they mean? I don't understand. Which I do ask one of my friends for help when it comes to like, oh, what does this mean? And then they tend to offer, like, oh, that's what it meant, and like, aw, naruhada. I think bulan is also moon in Indonesian, I think. Bulan? I hope it is. Because like, I, I, I did hear it from Munna's, um, song from Whole Alive. That's where she's from. Okay, okay, so that is similar to this word here. Uh, yeah, where is it? Yeah, so it's, there, there's a lot of similarities here and there. Which is really nice. I like learning more things here, so it's just like shows like, oh, it's, we're really, really close. Just, you know, we're just like a little bit just too separated that we don't understand anymore, but there's a lot of words that stick as a like, oh, well, it's there. We, we understand each other in a way that's like, yeah, that's that. Okay, let's see, um, let's go back to Duo. Okay, now let's switch to Japanese shall we, since I've already spent like an hour and seventeen minutes on the Indonesian side? It's more of like exercises for me this time. More rural the areas, my city brain. Between region island, local language mixed Indonesia, so it doesn't, it does seem confusing at times. Oh! Oh! I- i- is that, is that the case? Like, sometimes when people actually post a lot of like words in Indonesian, sometimes it's like, okay, that seems to be something that I'm not really used to. Like, uh, jugwa, I think jugwa gets really shortened a lot. But I, I'm just like, from my observation anyways. Also, one of my favorite words is, um, bangit, and also, uh, bagus. Bagus, good. Of the country's ruler. Yeah, um, I guess it's similar to Philippines, I guess. Like, I'm from the rural Philippines, I think. I'm at the very south, which is, uh, I'm Visaya. It's very at the south. Like, people who do speak Visaya is usually at the very, very south. Like, Visaya is to Mindanao area, basically. So yeah. We're, most of us are rural, uh, but the city is only, I guess, in Luzon. It's the more, the more developed island. Uh, as much as it's cool, I like the easy... Hmm, how, how should I say? Like, it's very easy when it comes to like, oh, I wanna go get to a bank, and the bank is there, literally walking distance away, but for us, we have to like travel for an hour just to get to the bank, which is really... Eh, it sucks, but hey, it is what it is. Let's see, let's go back to Duo. Uh, there we go. Here I am, at, uh, I'm at section three, unit one still. Because I just started this, basically.
Naisu.
Naisu, naisu. Ashita. Senshu. Sengetsu. So that's, yeah, how, that's how you read these things. Naisu.
Naisu.
Classic sea. Serumpun moment. You're very replaced for these two languages, I think. You think so? Naisu.
Naisu. Kyoto.
Kyoto, like Kyoto, and then se-
Senen.
Senen, and then-
Higashiguchi.
Higashiguchi, okay. These are places. These are places, and this is a money. Naisu.
Tai go mo dekimasu ka?
Tai, can you also do tai?
Tai go mo?
Dekimasu ka?
Dekimasu ka? Tai go mo dekimasu ka?
Can you also... Like, it says, do you know tai, but can you do tai through like? Hanashimasuka, like, I think that's usually how you say it, like. Tai go mo hanashimasuka? But, but, eh, eh, it's something. Naisu.
Senshu.
Eh, senshu, there we go. Nai-
Sengetsu.
Sengetsu. Tabemasu?
Tabemasu.
Ashita is tomorrow.
Ashita.
Naisu.
Zo wa totemo okii desne?
Zo is an elephant. Zo wa totemo okii desne? Actually, uh, let me check if this is like actually showing. Okay, that's good. Okay, good, good. Uh, let me switch back here.
Naisu.
Naisu tai ni ikimasu.
Ikimasu.
Next week, I will go to Thailand.
Sengetsu.
Sengetsu.
Kan.
Kanoku ni... Wait. Oi, naisu.
Naisu.
Ikimasu.
Ikimasu. Koku. Sengetsu, ikimashita.
Okay, that's the, that's the past tense. Ikimasu is like to, like, to do, yet, yet to do, basically. Mm-hmm. I'm going to Thailand next week. I, I went to Korea last month. Kanoku, nanka kanoku ni ike tan dakke do. Ah, demo nee, onano ko dakara, tabun abunai na tomon dakke do ne?
Tai de karaai tabemono wo tabemasu.
Tai de karaai mono wo tabemasu. Ze ki itta yo na.
Tai. Tai de karaai tabemono wo tabemasu.
Karaai-
Karaai.
Mono. Karaai mono. Tabemono?
Tabemono? Wo? Tabemasu.
Mo ichido okuku.
Tai de karaai tabemono wo tabemasu.
Okay, okay! I work a lot with Chinese characters in my work. Uh, really? Wait, that's money elsewhere. Oh, right, it's, it's... Uh, it's, it's still Katharina. Okay, I was like, wait? I was so confused, but I'm so close to the record, oh my gosh! Thank you guys so much for supporting me. Thank you, thank you. I do know that this is, I, I'm not really sure if I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna have any more study streams, but it's more like, um, uh, it's more like, how would I say it? Mostly recording my progress, like approval of like, yeah, I did study. Like, ah, benkyo shita yo, hon toni. Zetai ni. Like, really, really? Majide, majide? Benkyo shita yo, mo. Like, something like that. Like, oh, well, I got something. Well, definitely, um, if it's well received, I guess I'll make another study stream. But it would be a different study stream, I guess. Like, I actually wanted to, uh, collab with one of my friends, which is with, uh, Bibinka Bear. Because Bibinka Bear is actually a, a history professor slash teacher, and I really wanted to talk about the history of languages and also just ancient history in a, in general. But even if I... I'm just a studious person. I'm not really like a full-blown educator, even though I did had it as a career once in my lifetime. But teaching is, has never been my forte. But if possible, I would definitely want to do more study streams. Yeah, Bibinka, Bibinka is very nice because like, um, she's very receptive, and I did have a study, uh, note with her, um, Egyptian lessons before. It was really nice. I like to study a lot of things, at least. Imagine if I would actually bite the bullet and start studying math again, because like, that's my weak point when it comes to like studying. I think I've been a very top student in general, but my grades have been very much pulled down thanks to math, like, thank you for existing, I guess. But my only weakness is only algebraic math. I fared well when it comes to statistics and, um, geometry, I guess, and I also did calculus because I used to be a, a computer science student before, before I, um, chum, switched majors. It's okay, it's okay. I mean, I did finish college regardless, at least. That's what's important. But it was a shame that I had to get, it's like, it's like an ultimatum, basically, like, well, you suck at math, so it's either you give up or you just have to switch majors, and I'm like, boo, no, I wanna keep going. Yes, my grades were really good regardless. It's just the fact that, um, math just brought down my grades really low. But, you know, sera bi. It is what it is. Que sera sera, you know? My mom's math teacher. Imagine my hell, I suck at it. Oh my gosh, I couldn't imagine. I would say like, having a teacher as a parent must be very stressful, because like, they would hover around you like, eh, Linda, are you not studying yet? Like, Linda, are you actually like doing your homework? Amanda, have you wrote your thesis yet? Ah! Well, thankfully, well. It's only my aunt that was a teacher. But, which is, hmm... I never get to interact with my aunt that much, but thank God she's not my mom. Not because that she's a bad person or anything, but I wouldn't... I would like to keep my work only at work, not bringing it to my home. That's been my philosophy when it comes to doing tasks. I will do my homework the moment it gets in my hands. That's the reason why I have a very high grade when it comes to academics. Because I always do my work diligently the moment it reaches my hands. I finished my thesis like three weeks after having it being assigned to me. And they're like, but how would you do that? You're supposed to research. Exactly. I spent all the three weeks researching it and doing basically the remaining months of the, um, deadline polishing and also, um, refining my thesis, then basically practicing my defense while people were still writing their thesis. I think that was really fun. I, I do know that it's like, uh-huh, Linda's a nerd. Oh my God, Linda's a nerd. She's just like doing her thesis early on again. But like, I was able to play video games. I was able to play League. I was able to play Black Desert Online during the thesis hell week because I already finished it beforehand. Always do your work, friends. You would be surprised, all the free, free hours that you can spend, the more that you actually, um, finish it beforehand. Well, I'm not really sure if it applies to actual work. Maybe don't. So, just so like, nobody's gonna pile onto you more work, because like, that's what they do with efficient employees. Games teach you math. Yeah, um, when I was still in the coding, like, I used to code a game, which is, it's a schmuck, using Game Maker language, and it is using a lot of like math stuff, you know? When it comes to like coordinates, uh, the number of like projectiles, the speed of the projectiles in a specific coordinate, yes. There's a difference between sideways walking and also like walking diagonally, diagonally and horizontally. That's what, that, that's actually the big issue with Stardew Valley before, because when you walk sideways, like, you press your A and S while walking, it's actually way more slower than actually walking straight, which thankfully it was fixed. That's also a factor when it comes to like coding, you know? Like, a lot of mathematical equations come to coding. Nobody, eh, nobody knows until they actually crank open the code itself, like, oh my goodness, what is this? How else can you calculate hit points? Exactly! I actually, for my, um, for my computer science, um, project before, we were doing, um, count, uh, we were having like a hit point counter as a project before, uh, in C, i- i- in C sharp. Perfise! Oh my gosh, thank you so much for the brain. Thank you so much! Hello raiders, welcome. I am studying. I'm sorry. I bet you just wanna chill, but now I'm here, studying. Hello, welcome, welcome. Hello, hello! Yarashai, yarashai! Welcome, welcome! I, I do know that it's in the background, and I'm here yapping about programming languages instead. I'm sorry. Uh, I'll be back again. I'll be back again, definitely. Uh, let's see, uh, let's switch back to the actual, to, to Duo Lingo.
Senshu.
Senshu, chugo-
Chugoku go?
Chugoku-
Chugoku go? Renshu.
Shita.
Shimashita?
Shimashita.
Naisu.
Naisu tai go wo renshu shi-
Renshu shimasu.
Shimasu. Your model is so cute, Wan Bru. Oh, are those real-time captions? It's awesome. Yes, uh, this is Jumaku-chan, which is, um, provided by a lot of VTubers, actually. If you wish to, um, have real-time captions translated as well, uh, Jumaku-chan is definitely your best friend. There are other languages supported by Jumaku-chan as well, which is, you could also switch it to, um, vice versa, like, you would speak Japanese and it would translate to English, or you would speak Indonesian, it would also speak, uh, it would also translate it to English if you said it as such. Uh, I, I kind of forgot where to get this, like, this plugin is more of like, um, a Google code whatever it is, like, I kind of forgot like how to set it up, but I'll definitely try and see if I could have a actual tutorial stream. I call myself a tutorial NPC, and I never did any tutorial streams. But yeah, that's super cool. Thank you so much! Uh, it's not perfect, okay? It's not really perfect. It does have delays, so, um, it's not a sure, uh, what you call that. It's not very surefire way to connect with your other viewers because it will misunderstand specific words if you're not clear or you're spoke too fast. But it, it's there. It's something, at least. There's also, I also have regular captions as well, which is, if I could just like add a text here. I'm not sure if it's gonna... Here's captions. There we go. Here's the captions here on the top. I also have an inbuilt one from OBS as well. Isn't it cool? Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. The OBS one at least is available in GitHub. I'm glad that guys find it cool. I've been actually trying to learn how to connect with my viewers better, and also like to people who are hard of hearing, although it's not perfect. It does misunderstood a lot of my words because of my, the way that I speak, really. It's not really their fault. But yeah, I'm gonna turn it off, so there's not like too many captions floating around in my stream. Let's see, let's go back here. I didn't even submit it. The, the good part with the, uh, web browser, at least, it doesn't actually give me a timer.
Naisu America de jet coaster ni norimasu. Naisu America de- Jet coaster?
Ni norimasu?
Naisu America de jet coaster ni norimasu.
Ni masu.
Norimasu.
Okay, okay. Ki no su-
Sushi?
Sushi. Ei go wo renshu shi- 英語を練習しました, oh my gosh. It, it's very hard to read it if it's not in Kanji, like, in a speaking, English, English should have been like with a Kanji, but it's okay. 明日 これなんだっけ? This is not America, right? There are other there are other countries with this flag, this menu, Tost, o- orange? アメリカ Okay, good. 去年韓国語を練習しました去年去年韓国語を練習しました しました, oh my gosh, しましたしました去年韓国語を練習しました Okay. 先週 I saw a very cute elephant. I mean, elephants are cute, but I think the more cuter ones are cats, I like cats. 象はとても大きいですね象はとてもとても大きい大きいですね去年去年大公を勉強しました Cute purple hair, my hair is blue, but it's just like my, my, my lighting, it makes it purple. My inner hair is purple because uh, let's just say, my whole entire VTuber model is mostly a combination of the people that I really like. Even my, even my hairpin. I have Oshis, I have Oshis from a specific company, which I really like them, so I put a lot of motifs that calls back to them. The only people from that specific fandom can understand. You're cute too, Lambda, thank you. I'm not an elephant, but I'm definitely sure cute, right? I'm definitely, I'm cute, right? If I were an animal, I'm definitely a authentic fox, cuz I sound like one. Let's see, also, oh my gosh, I just noticed. Thank you so much for the follow, Perfise, I appreciate it, thank, thank you. Let's see, uh ちちはちちは大公大公と英語を話します ちちってさ, like, it's very formal. ちちうえ, ははうえ, it's extremely formal. Usually, お父さん is like the more normal, right? お父さん But maybe there are another Legend, oh, Legend doesn't really have like a guide there, let's start this one. I can, I can make mistakes though. Where did you hang out? Yesterday? 日本で初めて寿司を食べました日本で Eh? I ate sushi for the first time in Japan. It's more of like a English grammar, like, 日本で 日本で初めてお寿司を食べました, like, it was just like, I, uh, in Japan, I ate sushi for the first time kind of thing, like, eh? It's, when you're multilingual, it tends to mess with your head. Would you like to eat? ちば, wait, would you like to eat peanut ice cream? Peanut ice cream in Chiba? Would you ah? にゃんにゃん, ほんとね, I forgot. 金沢のお寿司は美味しいです Uh, 金沢寿司 is tasty. いや, 文法的にはね, やっぱりダメなのね昨日横浜で服を買いました Uh, I bought clothes in 横浜 Oh, yesterday, yesterday, Bruh, okay, I forgot. あさくさの遊園地 Uh, あさくさ Theme parks in Asakusa, okay, theme, theme parks. Because I was, Asakusa's theme parks. チョコレートのクレープが好きです I like chocolate crepes. 昨日初めて歌舞伎を見ました 昨日? Yesterday, I, I forgot, is it yesterday's the last one? 昨日初めて, I watched Whoa, whoa, saw, there we go, I saw uh, Akabu, eh? Akabuki performance yesterday. 昨日初めて, for the first time. I saw, for, for the first time yesterday. I saw a Kabuki performance for the first time yesterday. やっぱり文法ってさ, 英語の文法ってさ, なんか英語よな Very hard, like, ugh. Like, I messed it up so much, even, even in other languages, or even just in my own language, eve- even, like, it's just like I can't translate it perfectly, because like, knowing a lot of like languages, it overrides my mind, like, oh, like, should I just like arrange it in this way? Because it makes sense in your head, but grammatically it doesn't. Which I did um address it in my post on Twitter, like, well, yeah. Grammar wise, I still have to Would you like? You like to eat peanuts? Uh, peanut ice cream in Chiba? Would you like to eat peanut ice cream in Chiba? Okay. Nice job, you're 20 XP for your hard work so far. Hi, yay, why? Pachi pachi. 古い文化 Like, oh, yeah, oh my god, old culture. 文化去年日本に来ました I went Yeah, came, I came to Japan last year. I came to Japan last year. Okay. 来週イギリスで服を買います Uh, I'm going to buy clothes in Britain next week. Yeah, Englishか いや, イギリスのファッションってさ, あんまり, like, it's kind of like hipster, right? 水族館で魚を見ませんか? Would you like to? Look, see? Would you like to see? An aquarium? そうそう, さ, uh, wait, 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 would you like to see fishes? Fish? In an aquarium? そうそう, yeah. Would you like to see fish in an aquarium? Would you, ah, more, I forgot the you. 大公が少しできます なんでだよ? 頭骨 I've, I've done it twice now. Fool me once, fine, fool me twice, I'm just, I'm just silly. Yeah, more, I keep missing it. 大公が少しできます, I know a bit of that. 先月たくさんお寺を見ました お寺, I saw a lot of temples, お寺 is temples. Uh, 先月たくさんの, たくさんお寺を見ました. I saw a lot of temples last month. There we go. 先週中華街でタピオカティーを飲みました Uh, I drank bubble tea, bubble tea in Chinatown last week, 先週 どのバーに行きましたか? Which bar did you go to? どんなバーに来ましたか? How many, eh, 先週何時間, like, how many hours did you? Like, I'm not forgetting the you this time. How many hours did you study Spanish? Last week. Practice, oh my god, I forgot, practice, 練習忘れたよ Would you? I keep forgetting this stuff, cuz it's so dumb there, and there's a lot of words. Would you like to see fish in an aquarium? Would you like to see fish in an aquarium? There we go. Many, 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 how many hours did you practice Spanish last month? Ah, time, week, week! 先週 あーもう, ほらほらほら 頭骨なんだね, I, I even clicked the right one too, 先週なんだよな How? Many, many, many hours? I can't read English anymore. How many hours did you practice Spanish last week? How many hours did you practice Spanish last week? There we go. I made it! See, I'm very bad at grammar. 文法はダメだよな できないよ, I'm so po- I'm so po- Okay, let's start, one more, one more, one more. 先週友達友達と遊びます すみません, すみません先週遊びました I hung out with friends. 去年, ah,去年 去年 お, に There we go. もうちょっテキストだよ 具合悪い, 小さい, 小さいですもん型悪い is like not feel, not feeling good, 面白い is like fun. 渋谷 渋谷, 渋谷のピザ ピザ屋, ピザ屋 is like a pizza place. ピザ ピザ屋, pi, 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 pizza に There we go. 金沢しょっぱい is like salty, 辛い is like, きれいなところ? 辛い is like spicy. Man, 金沢 is a spicy place, I see a lot of things. 先週先週ちゅ中国語中国語 もう練習し, 練習しました? しました, 先週 Nah, this is like the, the past. 来週 Next week, します, like, to do, to do. 大公 大公を練習します, it's like, basically, it's the same thing last time. 昨日初めて蕎麦, 蕉麦ですよね? 蕉麦先月日本に来ました先月日本に来ました I, I came to Japan last month. 先週先週見ました Back at it again. いちごのクレープ Strawberry crepes, my favorite grape flavor. My favorite food is definitely curry rice, it's really curry rice. 明日き新幹線新幹線に乗りますあち ちばに行きます, like, she, they're gonna ride a Shinkansen, like a bullet train. ちばのピーナッツ Why is, like, is Chiba's peanuts that very, like, is it that popular? Because from the way that Duo always like talks about Chiba's peanuts, like, okay, okay, Chiba's peanuts. きれいなポストカードをポストを 見まし, 見つけました, どう? 見つけました きれいなポストカードを見つけました, I found a pretty postcard last week. Oh, 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 まあ, last week, 先週だ, 先週きれいなポストカードを見つけました忘れるよなんだろう Who did you watch a Kabuki performance with? 誰? 誰? 誰 誰? 花舞器花舞器洗濯は like laundry 誰花舞器を見ました? 見ましたか? 誰と花舞器 あ, more, 誰と, maybe it's like, I don't, 誰と? Or maybe 誰, 誰花舞器を見ました? と, 花舞器を見つけます, 見ましたか? あ当たりじゃん Oh, what? Did somebody else follow me? Ah, letter from a snail, thank you so much for the follow, I appreciate it. Thank you so much, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it, hello, welcome. Wow, I'm so close, just one more person, please don't jinx it, I still have to do my karaoke setlist, let me practice my karaoke setlist. I, I do know that they did change a lot of things in the um Twitch TOS when it comes to like streaming music, huh? Sucks for them. Sucks for them. Panya already, like, Panya's company shut down. And nobody went to claim the actual music that Panya produced. I mean, I'm not claiming it as my own in any way, but nobody's gonna DM say Panya music. Like, it's the only thing that's surviving from this game. I miss Panya online. アラマ、ダメだよ。Let me... Get out of here. あっち行け、ちち。OK. Let's see. Ah, let's go back to the actual now. Ah, 日本の。
日本の。
文化。
文化。
は好きですか？ 日本の文化好きですか？ イペー！ There we go. Completed unit one. こういうのは面白いんだよね。なんか, oh, well, I've been trying to push a lot of stuff in, in Duolingo. Competitive learning. But I mean, it's more fun, because like, there's no grades and, and stuff, you know? Ah, so then, I always do my mistakes. Like, I always review my mistakes. Let's get this started. You'll review three mistakes in this lesson. How many... How many hours did you... Practice Spanish last week? How many hours did you just practice Spanish last week? There we go.
千葉でピーナッツのアイスクリームを食べませんか？
Would you like to eat... Peanut ice cream in Chiba? There we go.
水族館で魚を見ませんか？
Would you like to see fish in an aquar- in an aquarium? Would you like to see fish in an aquarium? There we go. バター。Well, again, there's also a lot of stuff in Indonesian. I'm not even sure if I have mistakes. Do I have mistakes there? Nope, I don't have any mistakes in the past few lessons. That's nice. Bong, bong. Yeah, definitely bonked that. There's a lot of bots, but I'm very, I'm very keeping a sharp eye when it comes to that. Mm-hmm. Ah, also, it's like, it's almost two hours. I actually thought I would never survive an hour, because like, I'm not used to studying with people in a, in a streaming setting at all. But I appreciate it that you guys, you know, stayed still regardless. Anyways... Um, if you guys have any questions, or like, any words that you wish to learn from me, let me know. I'll definitely help you out. Yes, I did make mistakes. It's just because like I'm bad at grammar. I did say that I'm bad at grammar. One time, I jokingly greeted a bot using binary code. Yeah? I mean, did it respond? It's actually, hmm, how would I say it? Like... Interacting with bots can be scary, you know? Because sometimes they actually have specific codes. Well, it depends. Usually, it's in Discord that, um, interacting could trigger some code underneath it that makes you stealth download stuff. That was a big thing before, um, in the early 2000s. It's very scary. Ah, it didn't respond. It was in Twitch chat, OK. Well, Twitch chat is luckily very, not as, how would I say it? Like, it's not that complicated when it comes to code, so they can't really add stuff. But Discord, they can really like stealth add stuff. Like, I think somebody tried to hide a message that was embedded in the bot. That's like, oh, well, you're being watched by the FBI, kind of like that subtext. And then when you try to hide that specific subtext, they would link that person a... It's like a malware site, or like a phishing site. Which was really scary. I thankfully have that code. Um, ah, well, not code, but like, I thankfully blocked that kind of like formatting in most of my Discords that I do, um, watch over. Phishing is a no-no. Always practice internet safety and stay safe, because Chrome is actually removing ad blockers. Which is, I don't know why they're doing that, but whatever. I guess it's like bad. I'm moving to Firefox. But anyways, yeah! Surprisingly, we hit the two hour. I'm a two-hour Andy. I'm so sorry. But I think this is a good time to stop. Yes, I did put a lot of, um, time more in the Indonesian one, because, um, in Indonesian, it's, I'm still like a preschooler in terms of like, um... In terms of like knowledge about it, like, I can't do conversations about it yet, but I can understand some specific words. Ah, unlike Japanese, that I can actually speak a bit of it. It's just like, I just need to have more confidence. I don't have water, so that's why I'm also like stuck being thirsty. I need to remind myself to actually buy an actual gallon of water when I actually stream. And aside note, I just tried Chinese first lesson. I got everything right, because I can read stuff plus context. Ah, nice one! Hydrate. I wish it could hydrate to me. I'll definitely hydrate, probably off-stream, because I don't have water right now. Um, the water, like, the drinkable water that I have is, they run out. Ah... I'll restock, because I don't want to drink cola as a substitute for drinking, like, ah! I've done that multiple times and it just gave me headache. Rural Pinoy problems. Exactly. It's a rural Pinoy problem. I can't drink tap water in my country, because it's riddled with... Let's just say it's not the safest. And there's a lot of pathogens if you don't boil it, so yeah. Mm-mm. Stay safe out there. わかった。うん。わかればよし。OK, ここまで終わりにしますかね。あ、いい勉強になりましたね。Ah, if I could, ah, raid somebody right now. Let's see if I can raid somebody, OK? ちょっと待ってね。今のは誰かな？ Oh... Not a lot of people that I know. I'm just gonna raid somebody else as well. It's Aria51. I don't know them actually, but I'm just gonna like, ah, hand it to them. They're currently, ah, learning German? Me mutter ist nicht englisch. Well, eh, eh, but, but, yeah, but basically, they're studying German, yeah. So, please be nice. No raid message. Just let them do their stream, OK? Ah, so yeah, goodbye, and I hope to see you again soon. Thanks for having me! Bye-bye! Yippee! Thank you so much! End screen. That was fun. Hmm, I'll definitely try and do this again next time, maybe. May, maybe do it bi-weekly. I don't know. But yeah, thank you so much again, guys, for having me, and I hope to see you again soon. Bye-bye! I've done it, Aria's dream!